She's gonna miss, but all the other council members are here. We've asked Councilmember Tefoya if he would help us with our moment of silence and work with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your head for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up, we will have Troop 194. Go ahead, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color Guard, attention. Eyes, please rise. Color Guard, present the colors. Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard, post the colors. Eyes must maybe see that. Color Guard.
Thank you, Troop 194. Yeah, well done, well done. Okay, we just got one consent item we're gonna talk about briefly. This is the approval of the July 17, 2018 City Council minutes. Counsel, any comments, changes, recommendations?
Motion to approve the consent item as listed.
Seconded.
Got a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll go into the action items. We have some new members. Jason, Chief, who's going to do the introductions here? Chief?
Mayor, Council, City Manager. We've got a new sergeant. We had our retirement Sergeant Adam Madsen retired after 25 years, and we have now Sergeant Kyle Curtis, who's going to join us as Patrol Sergeant. So if we could have him come up and have him sworn in. Right up front here.
Thanks. All right, so just repeat after me, please, your identity. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Curtis.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
Or appointed to.
Or appointed to.
The Office of Sergeant.
The Office of Sergeant.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
I think Kyle's been our canine handler. He'll continue in that as long as the dog's still able to. And he's been with us, what, 16, 17 years almost?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So, you wanna introduce?
Yeah, my wife is here, my wife Cheryl of 20 years. My son Tyson, and my other son Kyber. And I have two daughters that aren't able to join us tonight. One's on a church mission in Scotland, and the other one, we just dropped off yesterday in Cedar City to go to school, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done. Okay. Chief?
Thanks. When we do these two, do you wanna do them at the same time or separately? Do them separately? Okay. Great, I have a couple to swear in as well. We have a couple of new firefighter paramedics. We have a couple of our staff decide to go to other departments, so with doing that, we had to hire two empty positions, so we filled one paramedic slot and one firefighter AMT positions, but both these two personalities, these new personnel are both paramedics. So I'll just have them come up. Brayden DeBrey and Shane Aristadi. And I'll talk a little bit about them here before we kinda go on, but this is Brayden DeBrey, he's one of our new paramedics. It's kinda nice picking him up, 'cause he was full-time with us here a few years ago. He left us to go to Leighton City, finished up paramedic school. We had a paramedic position opened up here. He wanted to come back, so we went through our testing process and we brought him back. So we're excited to have him back. So obviously, strong as an ox, that guy's strong. I were really glad to have him, but I'm glad we stole him from Leighton City, so we're glad to have him back. The next one is Shane. I'm excited, we picked up Shane. He just graduated paramedic school too, right in June? So he's brand-new paramedic graduate from Weaver State in June, so we're excited to have him. This is Shane. His experience comes from, he worked for Powder Mountain Ski Patrol for many years. He kinda had, he was involved as, he was the avalanche mitigation team member there. He was the head lead back country cat skiing guide. He's responsible, he's with the take groups of 11 in the back country and ensure their safety. Anyway, his history came from Gold Cross. He just graduated from paramedic school in paramedic class of 2017 with honors. Just barely graduated the DATC Fire Academy in June of 2018. He's brand-new. Before that, he completed, he has a bachelor's degree from the University of Utah in exercise, science, and sports medicine, and was member of the pre-physician assistance club at that point. He also has ATF explosive certification from working with powder mountain explosives, so we're really excited to have both these guys. They're gonna be great assets to our department. We're excited to have them.
Welcome.
Shane? Please raise your hand and just repeat. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Shane Aristadi.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Sign that one. Okay, Brayden? No drill.
No drill.
Okay, aye, state your name.
Aye, Brayden DeBrey.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
To the Office of Firefighter Paramedic.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
There you go.
Do you guys have any family with you you'd like to introduce? Anybody come with you, Brayden?
My beautiful Captain.
I like that, I like that. It's about you, Shane.
Yeah, my parents are in here, and then my wife Rebecca.
Awesome, thanks for coming, we're excited to have you, so thank you very much. Awesome, thanks, Jason.
Yeah, welcome aboard, appreciate you being here. Okay, Jeff, you have some other things you'd like to share with us?
Yes, I do, thanks. Mayor and Council, had a couple conversations not too long ago. We were looking at ways to maybe recognize some of our employees in the city that are just doing a good job. And so what I decided to do, I went back, talked with my admin staff, and what we decided to do was we came up with some appreciation awards. They're really not meant to be, per se, employees that are really going above and beyond, but are just making, just doing good things on a daily basis that really change people's lives. So I have a few awards I wanna give away today. We had a few calls, a few accomplishments, so what we decided to do is these are broke up in a couple different areas. Couple of the first awards are gonna be gratitude for exceptional accomplishment, and I think, does I have, is Brooke here? Can I see Brooke? No, I don't see Brooke, but I got Jake Rass, so I'll have Jake Rass kinda stand up for a second. I'm gonna start off with just some accomplishment awards. Jake Rass and Brooke are Roy City Fire and Rescue's first two sponsored paramedics to have taken successfully past Weaver State University's Critical Care Paramedic Course Program. This program, Critical Care Course builds on knowledge and skills that paramedics learned in regular paramedic school, and teaches them advanced assessment skills such as, which are used really for high-risk patients. The training goes in-depth as far as severe weight management, critical patients, drip medications, more ICU critical care, high-risk patient-type things. It's a six-credit-hour course through Weaver State that's condensed in a few months. Lot of it's online and coursework. These are the first two that we've had that have been sponsored by the city that went through and actually passed the certification. They have extensive knowledge, this course includes extensive knowledge in treatments, knowledge of increase in human physiology and disease processes. All of our paramedics are extremely talented and provide exceptional care, and this is just one next step in advancing the knowledge of our care that our paramedics provide to our community. So we'd like to just publicly congratulate both Brooke Burdas, she's not here, and then Jake Rass for bringing examples to all of our paramedics for years to come. So just wanna give them, I have a couple of appreciation awards for them, I'd like to give them these. This is really a benefit to our community. These guys have, they're not getting paid extra for this, they don't get any extra money for having the little bit more education and training. They do this on their own, helps, benefits them, as well as obviously our community benefits from their education and their continuing work to be better themselves, so. Thanks Jake, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey Chief, if I can, real quick. If you look at Jake, he's pretty extraordinary, he's pretty strong and going through all these classes, but you put him on the donkey. And the donkey versus police.
It was a horse.
Just doesn't go quite well.
You know, I gotta keep him away from the donkeys. Disporté. It's funny, thanks Jake. The next couple I have, Mayor and Council, are really excellent service awards, awards for excellent service. Again, we just wanna recognize some of our employees within the fire department that are doing exceptional things. Our guys are expected to respond to 911 calls, we treat patients on a daily basis, and they do a very good job. Every once in a while, we run into a couple calls on a case-by-case basis. I won't present these every council meeting, but as they kinda come to me and they're kind of extraordinary, I like to present them to you. So these next two are those cases. These are within a call about a month of each other. One occurred in June, the other call occurred in July. The interesting thing with these is they were both cardiac arrest calls that occurred in route to the hospital on patients, and they both walked out of the hospital with no deficits at all. So the interesting thing with these two cases, if you read the AHA statistics on even resuscitation from a witness cardiac arrest, leaving the hospital with no deficit is extremely low, it's under 10%. So the only way that happens is if the things that occur, these were witnessed arrests by our paramedics that took action immediately, and the care that they give and the services they provided right at the right time, based on their experience, their education level, their ability to react, really made a difference in these patients' lives. The big thing with this is even the physicians at the hospital made comments that if the care that wasn't done in the back of the ambulance, the patients wouldn't have walked out of the hospital. So just quick recognition on kinda what happened with these two. We had two cardiac arrest patients in the past two months that have walked out of the hospital. Most people would expect that this is what we're supposed to do, and we are supposed to do this, but most patients don't really walk out of the hospital what you may really think what happens. There's a lot of things that have to come in the line to make that happen, and a lot of it's just luck. What people most don't understand is that the survival rate nationally for out-of-hospital cardiac arrest is extremely low. So when our providers have the chance to truly save a life and see these patients walk out of the hospital, it's extremely gratifying. On July 25, Tim Vega, Brandon Story, Ryan Law, Cameron Beck had a patient with extreme difficulty breathing. This patient had a history of exacerbation from COPD. Our guys were called for a difficulty breathing call. In route to the hospital, the patient deteriorated, went into cardiac arrest, went in a rhythm what we call PEA, which is a rhythm that the heart looks like it's working when it's actually not working. So this was quickly recognized by our paramedics. They initially admitted advanced life support measures, medications, drugs, continued CPR into the hospital. Those actions allowed this patient to survive and walked out of the hospital a few weeks later from K. It was a survivability. Additionally, on June 6, Brock Mahondo, Brad Jensen, along with EMTs from Riverdale Fire Department responded on an unconscious patient. Again, they were quick and decisive in the treatment they provided, and were eventually regained circulation on this patient. This patient too walked out of the hospital on June 19. The interesting thing with this patient was this was quick recognition of another cause of a patient that went in the PEA en route to the hospital in the back of an ambulance. The interesting with this is this was a massive blood clot in the lungs that went to the lungs. Quick action on our paramedics with quick life support, recognizing the rhythm, acting on the rhythm, providing the right medications at the right time, providing the right care. By the time they got to the hospital, the patient had a pulse and was breathing and was discharged from the hospital because of the care they received in the back of Roy City's ambulance from our paramedics and EMTs that arrived. The interesting one with this call is this was in conjunction with our fellow firefighters from Riverdale City. So our paramedic truck runs, basically runs anywhere in the county. You respond and rendezvous with all different ambulances in the county, so their quick response to that really made a change in these patients' lives. So we just wanna recognize those two circumstances, 'cause we had two within a month of each other where the quick care really made a difference in someone's life. So anyway, I'd like to provide them with just a couple of words here. So when I call your name, I'll have you come up. I don't know if everybody's here, I only had a couple of them tell me they couldn't come. Did they get a call? Did they? All right. So I think they're all gone. No, I got Ryan Law's back there. Ryan Law, come on up. The rest of them got paged out. Yeah.
So thanks, Ryan, appreciate it. Thank you.
I will make sure they get these. Tim Vega was on duty at Clinton, he is a full-time captain for them. He was gonna try to attend, but he must not have been able to, so.
I'll catch you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Well done, well done. Okay. We have an ordinance 1817 to discuss. Jason or Aaron, who's gonna talk this?
Yeah, I'll pass it to Aaron.
Okay, Aaron?
Mayor and Council members, thank you. I'll just give you a little bit of a background on this and how this came about. About a couple of years ago, I got a phone call that was routed from another department to the then-city recorder who sent it to me. It was a citizen asking for a block party. I was being somewhat new to the city, I was unfamiliar with our process, knew that surrounding cities have ordinances, so I looked at our ordinance to see what our procedure was so I could be consistent, and didn't find anything. I talked to some of the officers with the police department that'd been there for a while and said, "How have we done this in the past?" And they said, "We'd send to the city recorder." Well, that's who had sent him to us. So I called the citizen back and I said, "You know, I'm looking into this, give me a day, let me look into the procedure, and I'll call you back." And she said, she said to me, "I don't, I don't understand why this is such an issue when my daughter called last week and you guys brought barricades out and closed the street for her, why is it an issue now?" And I said, "Well, I'm not aware that there, I'm not aware that somebody closed your daughter's road, who did she call?" She said, "Well, she called Public Works, and somebody took them out." So I thought, you know, we need, we need some kind of written procedure to give us a guideline so that we're consistent in what we're doing. Another example that we had, maybe about six months ago, we had a city, a business call us in the city, they wanted to do a fundraiser walk, a fund-run walk. We talked to them, I talked to them, again, it got routed to us, not sure where the phone call originated, but got routed to us. I talked to her, she said, "I don't, I don't think we're gonna need any assistance from the police department." I said, "Okay, that's great, check with the city and make sure that your insurance requirements and that kinda stuff for your event are taken care of, and I think we're good." The event was gonna take place on a Saturday. So Friday, the day before the event, maybe a month after she had originally talked to me, she calls me, she says, "Hey, can I get some stop signs and reflective vests so that I can stop traffic for our walk?" Well, I said, "Ah, that's, yeah, that's not a good idea, it's gonna create liability for the city, we're not gonna do that." She said, "Okay, well then I need five officers to help with traffic during my event." It's four o'clock on a Friday, and the event's supposed to start the next morning at six o'clock, so just another example. So we started kinda brainstorming and thinking about, and I started looking at other cities and what they do. And we kinda role-played some scenarios. You know, we have the scenario where we had, where we had Public Works take out barricades and shut down a road, but it wasn't, it wasn't announced to any other departments. What happens if during that event, you get the barricades that are provided by the city, so then you have people that then bring their cars out to continue to block the road, they then go into their house to do something, we get a fire, an emergency event, the one we don't know of, and we can't, and we're delayed responding to it, creates some liability. Another scenario, what happens if we have a DUI driver that drives into one of these roadblocks and kills somebody? We have now provided a barricade for this, and we have now involved ourselves in that. So I think what you have before us is, or before you is, is designed to, one, create consistency, and number two, provide some protection against liability for the city.
Good explanation. Okay. Let's, first, thanks, Chief. Let me ask a question, is there anybody from the public that may wanna comment on this before we start to have comments within the council and ask questions? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, comments? Obviously Aaron is very much aware of this kinda situation, thoughts?
No, I mean, he put his time and work and effort, and it's true, we've never had an ordinance to address that issue, and it does bring it together as it should. Reading the ordinance, the last 20 minutes, everything looks good and solid, there are, yes, I sometimes think 30-day requirement might be a little bit excessive, but there is an exception there, the city manager can okay that after that 30 days. And then there also is an appeal process if he denies that, to get that going, so. There are proper steps to be followed, and everything looks good, in my opinion.
Other thoughts? Counsel? Well, let me just make a, just a couple of observations, and then, and then maybe we can, we can walk out of here with a, with a great ordinance. First thing, on the surface, there's some real merit to what you're saying, is this talks about special events, but it's broader than just block parties. We're really including those elements that include concerts, or carnivals, or anything else the city may find itself involved in. And so it's gotta give us, it gives us a pretty good sweep of that. The only piece that I basically have just a concern with, and I think it might just be a wording, because I think there's real value in this, in this approach, is just this, this one piece in the statute specifically 3-9-2 in definition, and let me just read it to you in the contents by which it reads. It says, I'm reading the second sentence, "A special event shall also include any event available to the public that requires a full or partial closure of the public right of way." And really, I think that, that really goes to the heart of the concern about putting barricades up. And that makes good sense, if you look at it from a perspective that says that if in fact we're gonna have to close a road, then, then there should be some type of review process. It was really the statement that's after that that's got me a little curious, and maybe there's a way we can work this a little better, and it says this. It says, "Right of way or the use of city property, whether or not a fee is required." So let me put it in the statement that's, that takes the other obvious part out, and let me just read it to you as it states to me. It says, "Special event shall also include any event available to the public that requires the use of city property, whether or not a fee is required." That's really what it says. It's two statements, and that's what it says. And then the question I would have, and it's a good question, and Ross, we can define that, city streets are city property. City sidewalks are city property. So any event that takes place where in fact city property is involved falls under the category as written to be special event. So here's, here's what I see, and I see this often, so it makes, it makes kinda good sense. I go driving in the streets and I, and I see people in cul-de-sacs, and they have those portable basketball fixtures. You probably see them, they got water or sand in them. And, and you got a whole bunch of guys in that neighborhood, unfortunately, on a cul-de-sac street playing basketball. The question then is, does this special event include them? That's the question. And then you kinda look at issues where in fact the individuals may be having some type of a party, and in the course of having that party, they attract a lot of people, including all their cars, and they basically stack cars around the people's front of their house on the street. And I think we've seen in Roy days particularly, a lot of people, I assume petition the city to put cones out there, or they put their own cones out there, to make sure that people just don't take all of their parking spaces out in front of their house because of this event. And then I, then I look at this and simply suggest is, I'm not so sure that the intent of the ordinance is to get that detail, as much as I go to the point it really talks about in its purpose, and here's what it says in the very first statement, and I think this is where I really like to have the conversation, it makes this statement. "When an event impacts upon city services except those regularly provided." So let's go back to Aaron's point, he makes a good point. It really got to Aaron's concern when in fact the resident asked him to put five patrol officers out there on the street to deal with the 5K. That's a good argument to have a permit, because you need to plan for that, and that needs to be worked. I think there's a good argument, if the city, Ross, comes up and the resident says, "Ross, you need to take people and put them to put these road closures on cul-de-sacs, because we're taking city resources and we're putting them on the street, or putting them to work to provide what we normally would not provide." Is that a reasonable statement? It's just something that's different, something that's unusual. And as a result of that, I guess my comment to you would be is, is that I think really the premise for this ordinance really suggests this. It's not to say that we're not gonna allow people to have 5K runs. If you got a few people in this, in the community wanna run around the block a few times, usually they're gonna run two places, either gonna run on the sidewalks or they're gonna run on the street, and I don't think they basically need to have a permit every time that people decide on Saturday morning to go for a run. I think really what it says is, if I'm going to, if they're gonna require then from the city to draw resources in to accommodate a particular event, then I think this special event warrants city's attention and city's involvement, and the city fee. And I think that really might be a good way we can separate this, to make it so it's a viable document and it's workable so that we're not trying to restrict people who simply say, "I wanna do a little something on the streets on public property," and have to get a permit to do that. So what I would recommend, Counsel, that all we do is simply, under the definition, is simply state that everything is it is, but it says that we really, this is inclined to suggest that when an event impact upon the city service exceeds the regular, those regular required things that we, that we provide, then a special permit is then required? It goes through the 30-day cycle? If in fact, as stated, and we could surely discuss this, but if it basically says that you've gotta get every resident in a block party to agree to it, and sign a signature the same they agreed to, then I think you got a good, you got a good ordinance there, and I think it's workable. But I don't want the ordinance to put a people in a position that suggests is just because they're on city property requires them to have a special permit.
So that's only if they're asking for it to be barricaded or something like that?
Or they're asking basically for fire service or police office service.
What about the barricading?
That's a service, yeah.
Okay, that's what it is.
So if they want barricades, they're gonna have to pay the permit, pay the fee, apply for it. But they can hold a block party, and if they're not requiring anything.
Have it in your backyard.
Because the other thing, my concern was, is a violation of the ordinance shall be a class B misdemeanor, I mean, that's a little bit healthier than a misdemeanor.
That's a good healthier misdemeanor, it's true. But by the same token, I think the key is if they hold a big concert out in one of the parks out there and they don't tell the city, I mean, look, just think what the traffic congestion's gonna be for the, for the, for the public to deal with, and I think they have to have a permit to do that.
Mayor, I don't think the, I don't think this was designed for this, the mom, pa, and a couple kids to have a little party. I think it was designed for people that were calling our Public Works, or calling the police to do extravagant- I think it was designed for people that were calling our Public Works, or calling the police to do extravagant things. That's the purpose of the ordinance, not just to have a family get together, kids over Sunday.
That's what I wanna get. I mean, we gotta get back to the intent. It's not about the wording, per se, is everything. We don't wanna be splitting hairs for saying this and this, okay? This is why we have a staff, to be able to make good, common sense decisions, to say, "Yes, you're fine. You're okay. You're not in violation of this ordinance." And that's what I believe that does say, and gives our staff the ability to do that.
Well, I don't disagree with the comment, but, but here's my key. I don't, I don't think, Mike, where you at? Okay, Mike, I'm gonna put you on the spot and I apologize. Mike, you're the, you're the code enforcement officer. I think the statute needs to be very clear for you to simply walk up to any resident and simply says that I'm doing my job because the, because the ordinance says this is what's supposed to take place. Try to take as much subjectivity out of it, so that you know exactly what to do. And if the residents have a complaint, Mike, and, and you can quote me on this. If they have a complaint about the ordinance, don't take that up with you. Have them stand in front of this body and explain what their concern is, and let this body make the appropriate changes, if they choose to do that. If we leave subjectivity into the law, then I'll interpret different than someone else. And I, really for code enforcement, and I think for police officers, you have some subjectivity enough. But if we can clearly state to the policy that says, "If you want to basically ask the city to put a, a closed street, if you want to have police officers on the streets to basically go up and, and protect people running across the street, then you oughta have a permit, and the city oughta have time to work it." Otherwise, it's not my problem, and it's, it's not my concern.
If I, if I may just voice my opinion, in addition to that, my recommendation would be, in addition to if it's an impact greater than the norm of daily services that the city provides, then a permit would be required, or if it, if it will disrupt the traffic on a public street, or disrupt the, the use of a public space by, by others, that a permit would be required. So a family, I take my family to the park, that's not gonna disrupt everybody. But I invite four hundred people to the park for a fundraiser, that might disrupt someone else's family gathering there. And that's, so that would be my recommendation. I agree, I agree with, with your recommendation, but in addition to being that burden of the services, if it's going to have an impact on public transportation or the ability to use those public spaces by others, because of the number. Few people running around the block isn't gonna have that. Two hundred, three hundred people running around the block for one of the business's fundraisers
That's right.
has the potential of, of having that kind of impact. So I would, my recommendation would be merge those two things and have that be the requirement.
Okay.
I just wanna ask a point of clarification on a couple of different activities, 'cause there are ones we, just recently we've been involved in. Block party. We have a cul-de-sac in our neighborhood. They don't block it off, but in the middle of the cul-de-sac, they set up tables and chairs for people to, to do their thing. Is that something that they're gonna have to apply for a permit or not?
Yeah, under this ordinance, you would, you would have to.
And, and the other thing is, is like a neighborhood 5K run. Not, it's not for profit, it's not for anything. Our community, our little group, has a Saturday morning, has a 5K run. We're not requiring anybody to block traffic or that, and it's said right up front. You know, you're on your own for your own traffic compliance.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't see that applying.
But setting up tables and chairs and a barbecue in the middle of a cul-de-sac would fall under this.
Yeah.
And I think to the point would be is, is that there's a public safety issue associated with vehicles on that road. Now logically would be, for safety purpose conscious, shut the road off. That makes sense. But to do that, you involve Ross's team or the police officers. And by the way, the review process, Jason, has to be reviewed. There's a process you've got laid out for review that if in fact, it is agreed and approved, then there's some resources that's gonna be committed to make that happen. Good in terms of keeping everybody informed of what's gonna happen on that street, in case fire has to get in there, or police have to respond to emergency. But I just will indicate to you is, is that, is that if you kinda look at that process as it's defined, there's an argument to be said that we impacting probably public safety issues because we're taking public property, a street, and we're putting a, putting a bunch of people on the street with cookers and, and tables and chairs. I, I think there might be an argument to that, that says that's probably not a bad thing. I, I just think we need to have a clear definition of the process. And the way to do that would be is, anytime a resident calls upon the department's services to be provided, then I will indicate, or the safe.
So Mayor, I have a question about.
Disruptive of traffic, which would be where the, the stuff in the middle of a cul-de-sac can be.
But they didn't ask. If they don't ask, then what? I mean, they didn't ask because they didn't need to.
It's, it's hard to make that, it's hard to make the distinction then with the general public is, did I need to or not need to? Because the question then becomes is, it comes to issue is, did I call upon the city for services or didn't?
They didn't.
Mayor, I wanna interrupt here, because you're trying to get into arguments of, you're saying this is your definition of what the law should read or should be. Fortunately, that's not your job. That's why we have our city attorneys to handle this, and that's why they put it together. And that's why, again, I'm back to, we needed to trust the staff who wrote this, and I believe they did. Erin put a lot of time and effort into this. It's not like it just happened two weeks ago. As you told, it was a two-year process. We need to be able to, and even you mentioned this, if there's an issue with it along the way, the judicial process will iron that out. That's not for us to decide. It is up for us to decide to pass the ordinance or not. And again, splitting hairs, making, maybe this happens, maybe this happens. There's all kinds of scenarios out there that we're not going to be able to cover for everything. And that's why the staff is there to make that decision. To say, "Yes, you comply. You can do this. You can do that or not."
Okay, so let's, let's go to the other side. Let's assume for a second, the people who have a block party choose not to contact the city. Code enforcement officer goes down there, basically, we utilize that, a police officer goes by. Somebody's gonna walk out of there with a citation. Correct? If the ordinance is passed, and a, and a, by law, somebody basically witnesses that, that act.
You gotta define what you're seeing, okay? You just can't say block party. Throwing stuff out in the road, yes. Four hundred, or seventy cars, and a noise ordinance complaint comes in, it's a different scenario.
Well, but I'm saying, as I'm reading what this says here, Dave, and here's what it basically says. "Special event shall also include any event available to the public that requires a full or partial closure of a public right of way."
They didn't ask for it to be closed.
The use of the city property, whether or not a fee is required or not. That's pretty cool.
They didn't ask for it to be closed. I think what I'm looking at is, if it disrupts the flow of normal traffic.
And it sounds like in Councilmember Paul's neighborhood, this isn't an issue. But the potential issue that you run into, other cul-de-sacs. And a cul-de-sac is less problematic than a, than a through street or a different street. The potential problem that you run into is you have, you have four or five houses. Let's say, three of them or four of them are on board with it. So you shut down, you shut down the cul-de-sac, but that fourth house isn't on, on board with it. And now they're upset 'cause they can't get in or out, or they've got a family member that's come over to stay, and they can't park there 'cause you've got tables out there, and guess who gets to respond and try to figure that out? And we don't have a lot of room to try to remedy that. I don't honestly see us proactively going out and looking for these violations. The intent of this is to give us a tool when a neighborhood calls, because there are people that disagree, because part of the neighborhood decided to have one without including all the other neighbors. And now they're upset 'cause they can't park in their driveway, and they call us. And we, we're limited on the tools that we have. So now we can respond to that, and, and we're not gonna jump immediately to, officers are gonna use their discretion. We're not gonna immediately jump to a citation. We're gonna try to mitigate, try to get it worked out. But it gives us those options to be able to solve the problem. Gives us more tools.
And I agree, I appreciate that. There's one provision with the ordinance that basically says that up to a half a mile, it says that the person who's going to sponsor this block party has to get signatures from every resident who is in fact, in that street, that cul-de-sac, up for a half a mile. Just conservatively, that's forty houses, okay? Both sides of the street, assuming it's both sides of the street. The question is not clear in here. Let's assume he cannot get signatures on two of those, or one of those. Does that in itself constitute that they cannot approve that permit because they didn't get the signatures on two of the forty homes that are in there?
But I, you know, I think that would go back to the city manager, look at the, you know, look at the circumstances of that. Maybe reach out independently to those neighbors and see, so you can proactively address it ahead of time and say, "What's going on there? Is there a bigger issue that we need to get to the bottom of?"
Can you mitigate it before it's a problem?
We mitigate before it's a problem, exactly.
So what it says is, the city manager then has to make a distinction on the ordinance, decide whether I'm going to basically allow it or not allow it. Is that how it's gonna be?
And as far as that language, half a mile, we could change that language. If you, if we wanna reduce that into, you know, inside of the closure, I mean, we can change, that, that language can be changed. That's...
Man, I...
If we're talking about, are we saying that the signatures need to be gathered for a half a mile?
Yes.
I, I don't...
Let me read it to you. Here's what it basically says, and it's actually inside of the block party.
Right.
It says...
So the, the way I read it, Mayor, and I've read it, I have it right here. The, the signatures are from the people whose houses essentially be blocked off. The half a mile requirement is whether the street can or cannot be closed.
Exactly.
They're separated.
Yeah.
So they don't have to go up and down a half a mile. The question is, is there an intersecting road of a half a mile that allows them to even close the street? Essentially, is there another access point?
That's correct.
If they were gonna block off four houses worth, they only need to get those four signatures.
For the four signatures. Okay.
There's no, there's no, we're not sending them on a, on a mini marathon to, to get signatures.
Well, it does basically say that you have to have the signatures, okay, of those, of those people. For the very reason that Erin just suggested. He says, "If any one of those people basically do not want that party in that cul-de-sac, which interferes with his, with that individual's rights to get in and out of that, that parking place safely..."
But only to his property, correct, Mayor?
His, his property alone, then he basically has a right to complain, and his complaint will go to the police that simply says, "I can't get out of my, these guys have got a party going on in the front of my street, and I can't safely get my vehicle out." That's a legitimate complaint. The intent of this was, is to get signatures of that individual to ensure that he is concurring with that.
If their property is blocked.
If his property is blocked. That's right.
You know, I think Deputy Chief Perry said it very eloquently what the intent was. Again, I think it's written greatly, and we'll go through the discussion. I wanna approve ordinance eighteen seventeen as written and stated.
Well, let me, before you...
With the exception, no, we're, we're okay with the mile, right? We don't have to reduce that to a quarter mile? Right, so I... Correct, so we're okay there.
Yeah, so the road can't be more than a half a mile in length. It's not saying you have to gather signatures for a half a mile. The cul-de-sac can't be more than a half a mile in length if it doesn't intersect two other city streets.
Motion stands. I like it as written, and that's my motion on that.
Well, thanks, Dave. You basically just cut out the conversation. But let me just make a point, if I can.
It hasn't been seconded yet, so no, we're still there.
Counsel, you have some options. One option would be is, is that we can table it just to clarify the last pieces, to make sure that we're... This is the first we've seen it, so there might be opportunities. Or counsel, we can basically approve it as risen, as written, or we can basically go up there and simply just deny it. So here's the motions on the table. Councilman DeFoy basically a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, okay? This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
I have a question, so... Is this the marriage of the two? Does this include the chief's last two sentences? Or is it as written?
As written.
As written.
You can make, you could, if we don't get the vote, we can come back and basically amend it, so we can walk out of here.
So it does include that?
No, because nobody, he made a motion basically approve it as written. Had he made a motion that basics says I would approve it with the changes that were discussed, then we can take that motion to the vote. But right now, there's no motion to do that. It's motion as written. So I need to, we need you to decide, yes or no. Do you approve it or don't approve it? And she's tallying up. I'm sensing you got a different...
I gotta ask about this, what the changes were that you recommended, Chief?
Kinda what I'm thinking is, I may wanna rescind and amend it to include the last sentence he had.
He had two sentences.
Deputy Chief Perry, come on up.
I mean, this was, this was your project. I wanna make sure if there's something that you feel...
Are you happy with the way it was written, or you, you say that you needed to add those or not?
Personally, I'm okay with the way it's written. I think we can interpret it. I think we can work with it. If, if the council wants to change the wording, I, I'm fine with changing the word. I'm fine with whatever the, however the council wants to change.
Well, the only way I'd wanna change it is if you felt like there's something that you needed to add to it.
That you couldn't interpret.
What was the two additions that you've written down?
So it wasn't necessarily an addition. It was just kind of changing the language of what a special event is. So rather than going through, and as the mayor brought up, to include any event available to the public that requires full or partial closure of public right of way, which we agreed with, or the use of city property, whether or not a fee is required, the mayor brought up that that seemed vague. If I may, I don't know if it was in the exact words, but...
Just to eliminate four words is what you're asking.
And so the recommendation I made, the mayor, the mayor went back to in, in the purpose, in three nine one, that a special event would be any event that has an impact on the city services that exceeds those regularly provided. So my recommendation was, we take that and we add, or disrupts traffic on public streets, or the use of public places, and we make that the definition.
Okay, I will amend my motion. I will amend my motion to stay exactly what Deputy Chief Perry just stated.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, there we go, now.
Thank you.
Can it be done that way? You look like you have consternation. I wanna make sure we get it right.
It's okay.
I rescind my vote.
If I can just say, there's, there's three good legal options, and I spoke with Deputy Chief and, and other people about this briefly. Essentially, the, the mayor brought up the point that essentially the use of city property, whether or not a fee requires, is vague and somehow. So there's, there's essentially kinda three ways I see it legally. One, when legally, when we look at a statute, we would, we would view that portion of the sentence with everything else in the statute, meaning we would read the purpose into that part of the statute.
With context.
Maybe it's still vague. That's why lawyers exist, so maybe we wanna get rid of that, right? I understand that. To me, I think you can make it really simple and say, "The use of city equipment," and end that sentence. 'Cause that's really what we're saying, right? We got the full impartial closure, and then if they need city equipment, i.e. an officer, a cop car, anything else, then it's a special event. I think that solves everything, and it's much simpler. We just changed two words.
City equipment or resources?
Or, or personnel.
Resources is personnel.
I think resources kind of covers equipment, personnel, anything that's available to the city.
Great, we amend, the motion has been amended to state city resources or equipment.
Okay. Now, do I have a second?
I'll second that amendment.
We need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember DeFoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Erin, thank you. It's really important. You did great. Thank you. Okay, you did a great service tonight. Thank you.
Make sure we cover everything you wanted.
Okay, consideration of resolution eighteen twenty, and I believe, Matt, are you talking this one?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I present to you tonight, Resolution eighteen dash twenty. Basically, what this is, is a mandate down from the Utah Public Treasurer's Investment Fund, the PTIF. This is where we house our main investments. They're trying to increase efficiency. Before, they were having us fill out paper forms if we wanted to change administrators and send them in. They want to do that all online now, so basically up to like two thousand and five, but now. But anyway, I would just recommend that we do this. It would increase efficiency for us if we had turnover, or anything that we could go in and just manually change things. The administrators, things like that, nothing's changing there. It would just be the management services director and the city manager still on that list, so...
Okay, perfect. Any comments, counsel, for Matt? Questions? Okay, do I have a motion then to approve Resolution eighteen twenty, a resolution designating individuals to act in behalf of Roy City in transacting concerning Public Treasurer Investment Fund?
Make a motion as stated.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burrell.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember DeFoye.
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay. This is our public comment period? Please, if you have something you'd like to share with us, ideas, concerns, please take the time and step up to the mic. What we'd like you to do is state your name and address. Okay, seeing none?
No, wait. They, they can't comment now, they...
Not on RDA?
Oh.
Yeah, so, just, okay, seeing none? Let's go ahead, and we'll go into reports and discussion, city manager's report.
Okay, I'm gonna do the city managers', city managers' report and items for follow-up and review, kind of all at the same time.
Okay.
So, I hope you got your notebook and paper ready. September thirteenth, if anyone can help with the senior barbecue, we usually, every year, do a barbecue for the seniors. We did talk about it in staff meeting today, we'll reach out to Kathy.
What day of the week's that?
Uh, I don't know.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday?
What time?
We'll get, we'll get those details too. Huh? They want to eat at eleven?
Eleven AM.
So, we'll probably start helping at ten.
Can I wipe that down?
Sure. So, if you can just mark September thirteenth on your calendar. George Wallen Park, a little bit of update on George Wallen Park. On the south side of the park, by the football fields, is the parking lot, the curb and gutter. We're looking at being done by the end of the week. The playground is done, the splash pad is complete, the pavilion is done. We do have all of the tables for the pavilion in the city, and we're in the process of putting those together, big, heavy tables. Pavilion looks great, I love the pavilion, I like the look of it. Splash pad, we had kids on it this weekend. So, the monument, talking with the Wallen family, they have decided on the location, and the ceremony will probably be sometime in October. Did you notice the tennis courts, all the sod around the tennis courts has all been done last week? They're working on it today as well. Look, looks really nice. So, now, we're gonna start shifting to the east side, where all the ballparks are, and start working on the ballparks.
Man, manager, can I interject something for just one minute? North Park School has indicated they would like to be involved in the ceremony of the, of the dedication. So, if, if you'll make sure that they get enough of a heads up, they, they will prepare, and they would like to be part of that.
Yep, I'll do that, yep, thanks, Jen.
Yep.
So, yeah, we'll be working on the east side, and that park will be complete in the fall. So, it'll be nice. Status on the fire truck, that fire truck has taken way too long to build. We're now past the year mark, I think we're in the thirteenth month, and it did get pushed back ninety more days. So, we are not gonna see that till November.
November?
Do we get a rebate on that for...?
We get a full refund for the whole price.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, no. This is taking a long time.
Do you have to drive down, go down and pick that up and bring it home?
Yeah, they'll bring a couple of site visits, where we go check it out.
Okay.
Couple inspections, that's in Minnesota. Minnesota. And there is possible of a, a rural town that wants to buy one of our, the fire truck that we're replacing. So, hopefully, Jeff will work with him on that, so, looks good there. Okay, Mayor and Counsel, let's talk about annexation for a minute. Big topic, as we know, we're moving towards an annexation effective January first. This has been ongoing for a couple of years now, and it looks like we're going to do, for all those islands and peninsulas that are coming into Roy, we'll do a town hall meeting with them on August twenty eighth. So, that's a pretty important date, if you'll put that on your calendars, August twenty eighth at six PM. And we're just gonna hold it downstairs in our new, in our new room. We anticipate that meeting going well. The last time we had the annexation meeting with those residents, we got a lot of things ironed out. We've had Steve Parkinson, our planner, on our side, and the liaison with the island and peninsula annexation people coming in, and they've worked a lot of their, of, of the issues out. So, we'll have that meeting. After that meeting, the following Tuesday will be September fourth. That's when we will notice in our council meeting, the intent to annex. From there, it'll go to planning commission, because there has to be a public meeting, a public hearing in our planning commission, and then we're required so many days for it to be open. And then, on October sixteenth, the ordinance will come to you to approve the annexation. And then, it'll take place January first. According to Weaver County, this has to be all done by December thirty first, so it looks like we'll be well ahead of that date. We're working on municipal park on...
Heard of it.
Huh?
I've heard of that.
You know where municipal park's at?
Yeah.
Counsel member. The, they recommend the asphalt for the trail to be done in the springtime, and they're working on some other modifications. Parks and Rec is still working out some details, so, I don't have a whole lot on that. But it is in the budget, and we will work on it. The trailhead on six thousand south, hopefully, you guys have all seen it. We're getting sod on Thursday, the bathroom floor, sometime later this week, we'll have epoxy done on the floor. We're waiting for the plumber to finish up a few things. And then, Staker Parsons, one of the new companies in Weaver County, is going to be doing the asphalt.
Any idea when that might occur, finish? Haven't given you a date, okay? Definitely before October, okay.
Okay. Okay, gather my thoughts here. Okay, the Hope Center on, we are waiting for cost for some steel, the steel beams are pretty significant. We're looking at kind of helping the awning over at the Hope Center with the sun and shading. So, we did have a little bit of a grant to do that, so that's in the works, we're just waiting on a few pieces. Our community service project, this is important too, it's this Saturday.
Saturday.
We're meeting at the Aquatic Center at nine AM. Some of the projects that will be included is the trail, we're gonna do all the entrances of the trail, six thousand, fifty-six hundred south, fifty-two hundred south, and just a little bit on forty-eight. The old library on forty-eight, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The road between Village Inn and Harman's, and then the holding tank on four thousand south. Did I miss anything? I think that's it. Okay, you notice we've done a lot of overlays with the chip and seal throughout the city, that's been ongoing. We did, if I can, if I can get this right, Public Works Director, Oliver, we, on some of the roads, we wanted to compare a new chip seal that when you snowplow, it doesn't tear up the road. There's a few other cities in the county that's used it, they said it works really good. So, we put it side by side to compare, and give us a good, kind of give us a good idea, did it work? Did it not work? So, we're kind of excited about that. Audit, our audit, auditors will be here on September the tenth, and they'll be in and out of each department, and here at the city, they'll be camping out for a week. And then, usually, it'll take them two to three weeks to get the audit back to us, when our finance director, Andrews, will come before you and present to you the audit. We had some countywide with our police and fire, countywide active shooting training's been going on this week at Weaver State, and the complex is currently shut down right now for two weeks. It's our yearly maintenance, we go in and drain the pool, do some patchwork, clean up everything. It will reopen on September fourth. My last thing is to come before you, we've talked about it a little bit, and we think it would help our staff quite a bit. Can we do council meetings at five thirty instead of six? Basically, from five to six, we're just hanging out, waiting for council. But if we can schedule our council meetings for the two, two council meetings a month at five thirty, I know we have our economic development, our economical development director meetings for about an hour, hour and a half. So, are you guys okay if we do it at five thirty?
Comments?
I mean, I'm here for economic development anyway, if we can shorten economic development up a little bit, I couldn't move economic development up a half an hour and make it.
Okay. Other comments?
I mean, if, if we do it, I'm okay with it, but we need to make sure we notify the public, because it's been historically six o'clock, and that's, you know, historically, it's pretty, everybody assumes that. So, if we did it, it would have to be on all of our, all of our sites and newsletters and everything.
We'll make sure that we get the information out.
Can we have it far enough out that, that we feel like we've given them good notification?
Yeah, if we want to start not till October, to have it at five thirty, to make sure we get plenty of information out.
Yeah, I think that's good, we give that, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Starting October.
Yeah, starting October. And then, I think that's it, do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay.
Did, did you go over the library?
Oh, no, I didn't. Yeah, I skipped that, sorry. The library, I talked with Linda, the library director, they still have stuff in the library. It's been a slow process.
Oh.
They're not anticipating till October. Yeah, and speaking of buildings, Moeda, Moeda Building, we've purchased the Moeda Building, we're under contract with the state. There was a sixty day, and they did it more on Roy City side, a sixty day review of the land and the building. I emailed them today to see if, do we have to go the full sixty days? Can we do a thirty day? Can we do a two week? Because we're really concerned about the land, and we could have our engineers and public works director go through it. We don't need sixty days to walk through the building. They did say that we could do a sixty day, which, instead of a closing date in October, maybe we can get a closing date next month. So, if we can get that done, great. It was a big score for the city, and I don't know if I want to say this on public record, but we stole that building for fifty-five thousand dollars, when they were asking nine hundred and seventy thousand. So, that's a big score for us.
Absolutely.
So, a big...
That's the benefit of getting the chiller off of it, that we budgeted over a hundred thousand dollars for it.
Right, yeah, so, the chiller right there basically pays for three acres of land, so, we did very well, so, good job.
We shut down the thirty thousand dollar a year fee that we're paying the railroad for that chunk of property.
Right.
Net gain to the city's a great benefit.
Yep, and really, yeah.
Back to the library, have we given much more thought to that? I think you've seen some emails from the Boys and Girls Club directors, that there's money out there, grant money, to develop a tech center in Roy for the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, so, I talked with the former council member, John Cordova, he was in yesterday, we had a good meeting with him. He asked about it, because he's still a representation for the Boys and Girls Club. He just asked, what is the city's intent? I said, the city's intent is to use the building. He says, great, if we could use one section, that'd be great. I know we've also got maybe some businesses for some gaming and stuff that may want to go on one side, but we, we're also thinking about our recreation apartment going over there and utilizing that building. They've got a lot of storage for all their sports and gear, but we don't even have it yet. We could probably bring that back at a later time, but, so... And on the, on the Moeda Building, our public works director, Ross Oliver, was very instrumental in getting that building. He did a great job, so, so, I'd like to thank him for all of his work on that.
Thanks, Ross. You've been wanting that building for a while, so, we're excited for you. Good deal, okay. You have, we have under the discussions, waste management. Can you discuss waste management, what is next?
Yep, so, waste management, we had a work session last week. Right now, waste management is giving us a little bit of grace period, four to six months, to kind of figure out kind of what we wanted to do with it. In the work session, we talked about doing, implementing this January first. They didn't recommend doing it right around Christmas time, we couldn't do it earlier, because the newsletter, and we, we were afraid that we couldn't get all the information to the residents in time. And those that want to recycle, we're gonna let them recycle, they'll pay the extra additional funds. But we're not gonna do this until January.
Okay.
So, pretty straightforward. China is, if anybody doesn't know, China's had some issues with the recycling. They completely stopped all recycling coming into China. And most of our recycling that we recycle now goes to the landfill anyway, because it's not cleansed, it's not the purity, so, there's kind of a big debate. There's a lot of organizations, a lot of institutions that are canceling recycling altogether. We still feel like recycling's a good thing, if those that want to recycle wants to pay the increase, which is a dollar...
Twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three.
One last comment about that, is the city ready and prepared to make notification to the public that that cost is coming, and with that, they have a opt-out period?
Yes, we talked about having that.
Having that one month opt-out, so they know and prepared for that.
Okay, so, sometime in December, they can come into the city and opt-out if they choose, based on the expected increase?
It's either December or January.
Yeah, probably, I would say, if we're not starting till January, we'd give them the month of January to opt-out.
Yeah, and then, it'll be, go back to June.
Right.
We're working on the percentage, and I think she sent us an email today, because right now, if we're below a seventy-five percent, then we get charged a different rate. Well, since this whole thing happened, we talked about eliminating the seventy percent rule. Can we go to like a fifty percent rule, which makes it better for the city and better for the residents?
That's what she indicated that night, right?
Yeah.
We got a one year left on our contract, then we just negotiate after that, so...
Yeah, about a year and a half, yeah.
Okay. Key then would be, is make sure the residents get notification as soon as they can, and they have time to decide whether or not they want to accept the increased fees on recycling.
Correct, yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, Mayor and Counsel reports, Counsel, do you have anything? Anything you want to share?
I just want to say, I, you know, I appreciate the work that's going on over at George Wallen Park. I took my boys over there this weekend, and they played in the splash pad, paid on, played on the playground, really enjoyed it, things are looking good. I, I talked to Travis about a couple of things I noticed over there, and he said, as things move along and they do final inspections, there'll be some things fixed, but I appreciate the work that's going on. It's gonna be a great collection, it's all set and done.
Good. Mayor, just want to shout out to all the staff of the city for a spectacular Roy Days event that we had. It was the biggest, the well-attended Roy Days event we've had ever, so, great job, all staff. Yeah. Roy Days was great.
Mayor, can I talk about Roy Days for just a sec? I know I'm not rehearsed for this, and it's, it's gonna be pretty raw, but one thing I did notice that caused me really great concern, and that, and I did hang, hang out with our public safety team quite a bit, specifically the police department, and I really wanted to write a letter to the editor, or, not even to the editor, but have it be on the front page of the newspaper, how disrespectful these young kids are towards law enforcement. In my opinion, and I don't know chiefs, but we need a lot more police officers at that event, and if we got to pay for it, we pay for it. But basically, you have a group of kids, probably from, let's say, twelve to seventeen, that really don't care about Roy Days. Only, they're only there for one purpose, and that's to cause trouble. And it was evident, I watched it firsthand, they're not buying corn dogs, they're not riding rides, and we have this Roy celebration for our Roy residents, and our Roy residents are bringing their kids and their family. And all you see is these young kids that are causing issues, because they think it's cool.
They're there to fight.
And they're there to fight, and that's all they're there for, and, and, and I don't want them there. And I'll just say it publicly, I don't want these kids at our park, with our Roy residents and our families, causing issues and causing problems. And if we have to have twenty cops every twenty feet, till they get the point like, well, this is worthless, we're not gonna be able to cause problems, because all they do is move our officers to one area, and then they fight over here, and then they move them... And then they move them to this area and they're smoking weed and pot over here. You could smell it, you could see it. And all, all we were doing is chasing problems and issues. And I don't think we should chase the problems or issues. I think we chase the problems and issues and keep them out of Roy, so.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, obviously.
I do appreciate the, uh, public service support that was there for his fire. Um, you know, I, I watched a lot of things go on and, and I second what you said. If we need to beef it up, then that's something we need to consider in the future, anything we do to mitigate that. Because there was a lot of that that happened.
Since Jason brought it up, I can just mention, I've got an after-action report that I've written up from the law enforcement perspective. I'll share it with him and as we have some of these reviews, I expect we're going to have on with, with the department heads. You know, we'll, we'll have that discussion, but I've got that so we can kind of move forward. I've got a lot of ideas to kind of build off of for next year, so.
Carleen always has a meeting afterwards, Deputy Chief says, to come together, see what was worked and what didn't, and I'm sure they'll come up with some great ideas for that issue.
Thank you. Okay, any other things, council? Let me just talk a couple of things if you don't mind, just ask a couple more questions. Roy City Corporation Magazine, uh, still on target, October?
Yeah, um, still, still on for October. Um, we'll have all the information to Morgan, um, usually around the 5th of September. And really, department heads, no later than September 5th. Because it's, it's going to take us time to put everything together and, and the magazine people to put things together. So hard deadlines, September 5th, um, and then, it's going to be awesome. We're super excited about it. It's going to be a great magazine. It will replace the newsletter and it's going to just be a lot more, a lot more product in there from city, business, schools, residents. It'll be great.
Perfect, thank you. Councilman Tafoya, a few months ago, you asked the question about making improvements on the Roy City website. Is there anything we might be able to do or a clarification we can provide to help get that done?
Um, I was under the impression you spoke with Mark about this already.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the-
Whatever Mark told me.
Whatever Mark said, okay.
I have my kids, um, but we are not, so they'll do a complete redesign, I think, in four years. From where, when we signed our thing and that, and they'll do a complete redesign for free, but we just need direction on what isn't working. We've kind of talked about it, but.
Right, so just my clarification, they're saying we're not going to redesign it unless you pay for it. But we will help move stuff around? They will move stuff around for free? Or they're going to charge us to say we want to put this here and here?
A lot of things Mark can kind of manipulate if he knows what he wants manipulated, but there are some things that they're going to have to.
Then my recommendation, council, we're getting public feedback. If you've got some recommendations, some ideas, would you feed those to Morgan? And you get it to Mark and let that group basically talk your ideas through and see what we can do.
We know how long we've had that contract for?
Just started, one year.
Yeah. Okay, uh, last, if you can help me on the last two things. Sidewalk, we were talking about putting a sidewalk basically between 2750, 75 West and 1900 West. Ross, I know you got the funding for some sidewalks. I don't know if that hit the priority of your sidewalk list, but have you started sidewalk work yet?
We're, hold them up, they're done with Art now. We have them down at 5700 and, but his house actually, doing curb gutter sidewalk right now.
Right there, okay.
Cross from Roy Elementary back there.
Correct.
They are starting.
Perfect, okay. Uh, two weeks. Let me just make a public announcement that UDOT will have a, uh, the environmental assessment meeting kickoff tomorrow at the Roy Elementary School on 5600, uh, starting between 5:00 and 7:00 o'clock. The intent of that would be is take open comments from the public about ways by which they can improve the traffic concerns on 5600. Encourage everyone who can be in attendance. It's a good opportunity to get an idea of what's going to happen. Ask questions and hopefully come up with some recommendations that'll work. That study will run 15 months and, uh, upon the completion of 15 months, they'll come back with recommendations. Those recommendations then will make a decision about what will happen on 5600 in terms of addressing traffic issues. I'm not going to speculate at this moment what those recommendations will be. We'll wait the study to run its course. But the reality would be is, is that, is that hopefully from that, since UDOT owns that road, then there'll be a process and put in motion to help us resolve some of the traffic concerns we have in the city.
Mayor, can I just ask a question on that?
Please.
When they say the 15-month study, when does that, when does that start?
It actually, the funding was actually approved and started this year, started in January. They've now hired the consultants who are performing the study. It will be them and UDOT will be in that presentation tomorrow.
So they'll tell us when the 15-month-
It's, it will start and how it will take place. Yeah, it's pretty well initiated because they're holding this first kickoff meeting. But, uh, it'll be a, it'll be a study to, to assess, uh, addressing the traffic issues on 5600.
I guess the question is, does the 15-months go forward from tomorrow or does it go backwards from?
It probably goes back from January when initially set the contract and then it'll go. But let's ask the question tomorrow because you surely can ask that question if you're there. If not, I'll ask it for you, Jen.
And mayor, the good news for us too is, uh, this basically starts the process of widening 5600, which is powerful. Number two, our engineers for our city are on this board that, that's making up some of the engineer stuff, you know, along the road. They're actually our engineers for the city, so they've been step in, step in key with these UDOT group, so that's a benefit. And I think this study was $1.5 million, so there's basically no way that UDOT's going to want to not do anything. So this basically starts the ball rolling to fix this east and west issue.
We're talking 15 months, so when it started back in January, it would be the beginning of next-
Maybe another year we got, yeah.
Uh, next summer, I guess.
Yeah, and, and to that point then, it will also include not only 5600, but the interstate, uh, that takes place right there at I-15. And so this is a pretty wide project. Uh, again, really important to residents who are involved and residents who live in Roy to be aware. And, uh, and make sure, we'll do our best to make sure we keep the residents informed of what's happening there. Okay, having seen, any other comments, council? Please.
Before we adjourn, you might want to tell these people that the RDA meeting might be interesting.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, okay, having that, before we call for motion to adjourn, let me just indicate what's going to take place next. We're going to have redevelopment agency meeting, board meeting right after this one. So we closed the city council meeting and we will now go into redevelopment. There's a number of conversations that's going to take place, um, relative to how, um, how we're going to address redevelopment in the city. So obviously, if you could stay, stay with us. Always great to have public meetings and public input where we can, but this is an important part of the process. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. That's getting worried there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion when we go into RDA meeting.
And I was going to take a breath here. Okay, I have a motion to go into the redevelopment agency board meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having said that, we are now into the redevelopment board meeting. Okay. Now with that then, what we'd like to do is we'd like to welcome everybody to the board meeting. We have all the city counts, excuse me, all the board members except, uh, board member, uh, Carleen Yeoman. We need to basically go through some consent items here if we can. Approval, uh, of the April 3rd, May 8th, and June 19th, 2018 RDA meeting minutes. Any comments, questions, changes to those minutes?
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the RDA board meeting for April 3rd, May 8th, and June 19th, 2018.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none. Now we'll go into discussion. Discussion is review that and discuss to resolve loan program, excuse me, result, revolving loan program and guidelines. Randy Sant, you're up, if you can share your thoughts on this subject.
Mr. Chair, members of the, uh, board, uh, as you will recall during our, uh, budget, we approved, uh, $300,000 to be set aside for a revolving loan fund, uh, to assist, to assist businesses in, uh, in Roy City. And tonight, what we want to do is have a conversation about some of the mechanisms and how we should go about and set this fund up. The plan will be to discuss this, get your input, and then we will prepare actual guidelines, application, and other documents. Bring those back to you next month for official adoption by resolution. And once that's done, then we'll be in the process, we'll be in the business where we can start taking, uh, actual applications for the funding. What I've handed out to you is a, a list of questions that I think would be appropriate for us to discuss regarding setting up a revolving loan fund. And then, uh, the second page is, uh, I'll call them staff recommendations as to maybe, uh, to some of those answers of those questions to lead us on, on the discussion. The first question obviously is, what should be the max amount of a loan that we would lend? We have $300,000 budgeted, so we need to decide how many loans we want to do and what would be the maximum amount of a loan. As you are aware, the funds are coming from the redevelopment project areas. However, the law does allow us to spend this money because it is fund balance outside of the project areas, but we need to have maybe some input and discussion on how many loans should we make within our redevelopment project areas and how many we should make outside. The third question, uh, we should have objectives of those loan, of the loan program. What do we want to accomplish and how will the businesses that apply for that meet those objectives? Another question is, in some cases, uh, some communities have set up a deferred loan grant. Basically what that is, is you make the loan and you make the loan subject to some terms and conditions. And if those current terms and conditions are met by the business, then the loan is eventually forgiven. And so it becomes a grant, but they have to meet those conditions, sometimes on a yearly basis, sometimes over a period of time. What should be the public benefit criteria for the loan? RDA funds are a little different. If this were actual city money, then under the state statute, we'd be required to do what's called a 10-8-2 study. Where it shows the public benefit to be derived, how much, and it has to be equal to the benefit given. However, the redevelopment agency is exempt from that statute. But still, because this is public money, there should be public benefit that should be derived from that. And we need to make sure that, uh, the loans that we give do meet public benefit. And we should have a discussion about what, uh, some of that should be. We need to discuss what the interest rate should be and should it be the same for all loans or reduced or increased based upon risk? What are the standards for the collateral for the loan? Should we require personal guarantees on the loans? Should we have an unwriting process? If so, what should we evaluate? What is the application requirements, the approval process and the oversight procedures? What financial information should we require in considering the loan application? And what are the eligible uses for the loan funds? And can a business or entity apply for more, more than one loan? Another thing we need to talk about is what should be the terms and the length of the loans that we make. So those are some questions that I've outlined that I think we should maybe have a discussion about and then move forward with the guidelines. Uh, I don't want to be the, the whole discussion, if you have any input as we move forward, we certainly want to hear from it. But on the next page, I've kind of outlined some of my recommendations to those questions. The first thing should be the max amount of a loan. I'm recommending that it should be 25 to 30,000. If we do 30,000, that gives us 10 loans. If we do 25,000, then that would give us maybe 13 or 14 loans. Uh, and that would be the max in amount. Now, one thing I want to make really clear is we will set a box of guidelines. If a company or business wants to go outside of that box, they will have to come back to the board for approval. So once we set the box, you'll come back and you'll officially adopt this by resolution and that'll become the box that we work in. So if we happen to have a business in this case that want to borrow a loan, we'd bring it back to the board and have the board have that discussion. But for our recommendation and our guidelines, we'd set that cap at 25 to 30,000. Uh, any comments or suggestions about the cap?
Board?
Have you heard anything from businesses? Is that a reasonable amount? Is that?
Well, there are, there are businesses that I, we, I know we received one application that would like to have 50,000. I think a business would like to get as much as they can from you. But again, my feeling is we're trying to spread the, the, the money as far as we can. I guess as we get into this, if we find out that we've only had in six months two applicants, then maybe we could come back and have a discussion about whether or not we would be willing to, if we had an application for 50,000, whether or not we'd want to lend more. But right now, I'm trying to say that I think at 30,000 is a fairly good number that will accomplish a lot of things that sometimes a bank won't lend money for. Sign replacement, sometimes equipment, uh, sometimes capital, sometimes product. Sometimes those are the things they don't get money for from a private lender.
Randy, let's talk the business aspect of it, okay? Because we want businesses to succeed, but chances are half of them are going to fail. We loan them 30,000, they pay back five, 25,000's left unpaid. We put a lien on the property and we hope for the best. Is that how that would work?
I'm actually recommending, we'll ask for personal guarantees for these and we will be like anybody else. We'll lien accounts, we'll lien bank accounts, we'll do whatever we have to, to get back our money. So I'm saying we're going to go a little bit further than, than what you normally would have. But the reality is that you're absolutely right. If we lend 30,000 to a business that's never been in, never done anything, chances are very good that that may fail. However, if we lend our money to somebody who's been in an operation for five, six, seven, eight, nine years, that should succeed. So part of the process is going to be as we evaluate our risk and we evaluate what we, what we give, that'll all be part of the process.
So as part of this process, say that the exact thing you just said, stated happened. We have two businesses come in, one who's done a couple and been successful, one who's never done one. We can say, sorry, we're a great business model, but you haven't had any experience, we're not going to lend you one, but the other guy, we were going to lend it, and is that okay?
How is that vetted?
Yeah, I, I, again, it's, it's the redevelopment agency's money. I don't see us being any different than we would be a bank. And banks turn down loans all the time. Uh, we want to make sure that the business that we lend the money for is going to be successful. We want to make sure that the business has in place those items that they do. So part of the evaluation will be the risk that we inherited and whether or not we feel like it's too risky of a loan. If it's too risky a loan, our answer would be, we do not recommend we lend to this company.
Thank you.
Well, we talked about guidelines of them submitting information to us. It would be about the same as if they were applying for an SBA loan, you know. Chances are if they're a startup business, they're probably applying for an SBA loan. We would require that same information. So some of the vetting process is already there and, and done.
Yeah, I'm going back through the next page, the recommendation page, so everything looks good for me till we come down to number four, the deferred grants. For me, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, the point of that is to help somebody out, but not give a freebie out on taxpayer dollar, which we want to recuperate and invest back in businesses also. That's my opinion on the grant.
I kind of agreed too.
So I wouldn't be in favor on number four, but then going after that, everything was great. I mean, good recommendations, yes, we still have to work out ideas, but go ahead.
13, is it 13?
Yes, that's the term in the loans, right.
I was hoping that we could extend that by a couple of years. I realized, I realized that as a city, we want to get paid back so we can help somebody else. But the bottom line is, is real estate and fixtures and equipment. There are a lot more money and that two-year additional timeframe for them to get that paid back might be the difference of whether they stay in business or go out of business. Good laws. I, I had a brother just buy a car and they gave him eight years on a car, so.
I, I'd have to think about, I mean, can you tell me, Mr. Santa, what- I'd have to think about, I mean, can you tell me, Mr. Saxon, what, on a thirty thousand dollar loan for a five-year term with a two-point-five percent interest, is that what it is? Can you tell me?
So you got six thousand dollars without the interest on top of that, that's all they're paying back in years' loan.
Could you tune up your long calculator?
Yeah, if we, actually, our interest rate that we're proposing is two-and-a-half percent above what the Public Treasurers Investment Fund is. I think that's about less than a percent right now, isn't it? Last time I looked, it was like zero-point-eight-five.
Yeah, it's creeping up there.
Is it?
So let's just think about what the payment per month would be.
So it would be about three-and-a-half percent. So your payment on a five-year loan at that amount would probably run you right around maybe six-twenty-five a month.
So to me, if they're not, if they're not coming in with more than six-twenty-five a month, above and beyond their operating costs, they're, they might be in trouble But I might be wrong.
Well, I.
What's your thought about the term, Dave?
You know, to be honest, in any new business, you're going to know if you're going to make them through the one to five years. After the five years, if you're not financially viable, then you're never going to succeed. So I think it's a good starting point to go with. We can always adjust it come the next few years down the road.
So, so what happens if they come to the end of that term alone and, and they haven't made it? Can, can we, I mean, can we adjust it at that point?
You, you have the right, again, that the box would be whatever term you set.
Just like you go to a bank and remortgage.
But I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to put in the guidelines that there, you know, you could come in and ask for an extension, because what'll happen, every business will come in and ask for an extension. I think that what we would do in that case, if we have a loan that looks like it might be going in default because it's not quite paid it, we would certainly reach out to that individual, find out what options there might be, and whether or not we could extend it, because obviously, we would prefer to do something like that rather than foreclose on the loan. And then I think what we'd do is we'd bring it back to the board and say, here are the situation and the, and the situation with this owner, and whether or not you as a board would be willing to extend those terms, whether it be two years or three years or.
Okay, okay, let's go with Mr. Saxon's question, then. Let's go back to that. If, if we said the term of the loan was not five years, I mean, that was not our maximum, but eight years instead, then what would the, what would the payment be?
Well, we could, well, I'd have to figure that out. It'd probably drop it down a little bit, your principal.
What's a little bit?
Well, your prin, it'd probably drop it around five, maybe, maybe four-seventy-five.
So, so would there be a, I mean, is there a reason not to do that, I, I guess is my question?
Well, I think the proper way of doing this would be if you want to extend that, I'd recommend we put up there, loans will be up to a period of time, whether that be seven years or eight years, and that the, the length will be based upon the evaluation that we do of what's submitted to us for collateral, for the business profit, and things like that, and then we could make a determination at that point.
So, so there wouldn't be a problem with saying it could be one to seven years?
It could, there isn't a problem saying that, no.
So, so maybe we do that with the, the idea that it's evaluated on a case-by-case basis, is what you're saying?
Well, again, if you, if you go through my criteria here, I've, I've outlined the fact that we would require certain financial information from the company.
Mm-hmm.
First thing we're going to require is we do want to have a business plan. If a business doesn't have a business plan, I would recommend we would not lend them any money, because that tells us they don't know what they're doing, they got to have a plan. Any bank, any SBA program, anybody would require that.
Well, that makes sense, sure.
I've got some numbers, Randy. Thirty thousand dollar, five-year, three-point-five percent is five-forty-six.
Okay.
If you change that to seven-year, it's four-oh-three.
Four-oh-three.
That might be significant.
So basically, a hundred and forty dollars difference a month, if you go from a five to a seven-year.
But again, we can go one to seven years, and with the plan, it can be.
Right, we would look at.
The original proposal's one to five.
We, we would evaluate all of the information they sent us. We'd look at their profit-loss statements, we'd look at their performance, we'd look at their cash flow, and based upon that analysis, we would make a determination of how long that loan should go. If they have a great cash flow, we'd probably do a one or a two-year.
There's no difference in the bank when you decide.
If they don't have a lot of cash flow, it looks like it's going to take them one or two years to get started.
It might get rolling.
Then we may need to give them a six or a seven-year loan. So the terms that we would come up with would be based upon the analysis and the evaluation we do of the criteria that they submit to us.
So, so going back to, to Mr. Saxon's idea, I, I don't see the problem of going longer rather than, than keeping the box smaller.
See, just changed the word on thirteen to, on evaluation of business.
One to seven years based upon the valuation of the criteria that's submitted.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'd go with that.
Just, just understand that the premise of this process was simply to say, once the policy is approved by the board and is established, then a lot of the decisions, as long as they stay within that box, doesn't have to come back to the board for approval or changes.
That's why I'd say one to seven as opposed to one to five, because that allows us not to have to come back to the board.
It allows you to open up without having to come back to the board for approval.
Okay. But anything that's outside of that box, as Randy suggested, has to come back to the board for approval for a waiver.
Would still have to come back, understood, understood. I got it.
Okay, so I, I think we're good with all the recommendations on that page, with what we talked about there, the marriage back process page, Randy, if you want.
Yeah, so, so again, all I would say, so you understand what the process would be, is that we would do this, we'd have a staff review of the, the loan application. We have an economic development committee that has two council, or two board members on that committee. We would take our recommendation, staff recommendation, to that committee, and we would have them then approve the loan, as long as it stays within the box that we've set. If there's anything outside of that box, then it automatically comes back to the board for approval.
Right.
So if they want more money, they want different interest rates, anything like that would come back to the board. Then what we would do is we would provide the rest of the board a report of who we made the loan to, what the terms were, what the conditions, so you would know what it was. But we would not bring every loan back to you for approval unless it was outside of the box. Staff, economic development committee, and then a, a report given to the board on what was loan, unless it's outside of the box. So I just want to make sure that you understand that process.
Just as long as we all know that there is an application's being reviewed, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and the board will in fact get a summation of all of the transactions that have been approved so that they know.
We will get that summation.
Yes, you'll have that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah.
Okay, one last, one last thing, so there's no confusion, make sure we're okay. The maximum amount is twenty-five to thirty. Should we basically agree to thirty as being the amount, allow ten then, particular loans, the money that's been budgeted?
I'd say thirty.
I mean, I, I like the higher number. Part of me thinks, all right, okay, for thirty thousand, you could buy two ovens, if, you know, if you have a good thing. It's not really a lot of equipment for that money, I get that, but I get also the higher amount.
Correct. Let's just go thirty.
Thirty, okay.
I'd say thirty.
Randy, can we do that, thirty then?
Sure, and if you looked at a three-hundred thousand dollar loan, that's ten percent. So, so I think thirty thousand is, is, is a good number to work, work from. The only other thing I wanted that came up was, we do want to add to eligible uses, facade restoration.
Put that in that conversation.
If somebody wants to come in and fix up a building that needs to be taken care of, we would.
I thought you said sod, not facade.
Facade, facade restoration.
We need some facade restoration too, right here.
And then the other thing I think we need to talk about is just the starting date that we want the loan to commence, because a lot of times, it takes a few months for a business to get up and operating and before they start having cash flow fall, flow in. So a suggestion was that we would start loan payments perhaps up to ninety days. Again, I like the word up to, so it's not.
Ninety days deferred payment.
Up to ninety days after the loan has been approved.
I think ninety days is reasonable.
So that gives them three months to put the, the business together and start getting some cash flow before they, we require them to make a payment.
I, I like almost everything you've said. Can, we've, we've got an interested applicant that's here. Would you just like to hear from them for a moment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask them to, so, Randy, as soon as you're done, I'm going to ask for a public input, so.
If there's another, no, no other questions, and everybody's good with what we've come up with the recommendations, we'll begin to prepare the documents based upon these recommendations.
So the only changes were the ninety days, that wasn't it, that wasn't, and the one to seven years.
And the ninety days, and we'll add facade restoration. The only other thing I wanted to say, Mr. Chair, if I could, real quick, is the process of this. So what'll happen is when we get these loans all, all put together, we're going to need to have them, we'll, I'll work directly with the finance director to make sure that we set up the, the invoicing, we set up the billing, we have the documents all housed in one place, and work with them so that the, the money's coming in and out and appropriate. We'll put it into the revolving loan fund itself. We'll provide you a report monthly on what's happening, and hopefully, if we have problems, we can find out about those sooner than later, so we can then decide what's the appropriate action to take on any bad loan. So that's all I wanted to add, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you for your work.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Anybody like to make a comment? If you would, just put your name, ask, give us your name and address. Can speak up to the phone, to the microphone? Thank you.
Some of you guys already know me. I'm Anna Davidson. I own the property across the street, and I had a business in Roy for eighteen years, and I recently left. I left because this wasn't available when I was here, and I spent eighteen years across the street watching this council and this city. And I'm here because I'm in support of this lady right here, who's trying, I'm actively working with trying to get her into our building, and I'm going out on a risk. And Dave, I want to disagree with you on a few things. Startup businesses are what found this country, the people that put their heart and soul into putting their lives out there. This young lady is trying to do that with her family, and I'm making exceptions in my business. A plan like this, a loan like this, can help her get what she needs to be able to get into my building with me helping her. And so I, I want to disagree with you in the fact that I think people that are willing to write a business plan, definitely, and understand that the risk involved means hard work, they will make it. And that's why I'm actually here in support of her and her family. I want to make this happen because I spent eighteen years across the street from this city. Eighteen years, I spent ten of those years working seven days a week. So it's very important to me to put someone into my building, into my property that I own, that wants to be successful, and she has done everything I've asked her to do. She's gone to score, she's looked up the information for the economic, economic development team and saw, like, she's done everything I've asked her to. So I'm coming, supporting her to try and help get this through, so she can get your guys' support and help in her next step.
So Anna, do you perceive that this would facilitate her, her?
I do. So originally, I met with this gentleman right here, and he came out to Ogden, and we talked, and the original plan that he had was for a lesser amount, and I was like, that won't even buy a refrigerator. You know, it's very expensive, and the restaurant business does have the highest failure rate out of all small businesses, but that doesn't mean that you don't try. I mean, small businesses employ sixty-five percent of all of the workforce in the United States. So we have to be able to be realistic and look at someone's plan and see the effort that they put into making that possible. She's scared to be up here with me right now, but this young lady's met with me a few times, and I've seen her heart, and I've seen her dedication, and she has met every criteria that I've put out to try and help her get into my building. And so I want to tell you what this means for you guys. You're talking about that thirty thousand versus the twenty-five, and the ten versus the twelve. Well, guess what? That's ten businesses that you wouldn't have had in Roy. That's a huge difference, because this, because Roy was a bedroom community. I mean, I was fought tooth and nail eighteen years ago when I tried to open my business. John, you've known me, Dave, you've known me, Jason, you've known me, you know? There's a lot of you that have known. I've always been vocal in fighting over here to do what was right for the people. And so I'm here to fight for her, because I want to see her have a successful restaurant in my building. I want to help make that possible for her. And I'm willing to help her with her business plan and her food costing and figuring out what she needs to do, because that's what we need to do. Small businesses need to help each other to be successful.
Thank you for your voice.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I just want you guys to all meet Myra, and I want you to understand how important this is to her. She has been waiting for this meeting. She started meeting with me almost a month ago, trying to figure out how to make this possible to get in there. I told her if this goes through successfully and you guys approve things tonight, and I know that the opportunity is for her, I'll allow her to start working that building immediately and get open as soon as she possibly can.
Okay. Myra, did you want to share any thoughts? That's okay.
Come on.
Just that I want to say, thank you, Anna, for, for all the support. We don't have any words to explain how she tried to help my family, and I know that she trusts me, and me too, and I know Brian, and the other people that he tried to help my family. And I worked for my food truck for five years, and I know that I'm capable of running the restaurant.
Okay. Well, we look, we look forward to your, to your package and your involvement, and we'll do everything we can to help you.
They currently own a food truck.
Food truck, which one is it?
Salvadorian pupusas.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, perfect.
So she has a dual-fold thing she can do here, because she can run her food truck and use the restaurant, so then she cuts her costs because she's not paying for a kitchen outside. So there's pieces that I've worked with her already that I know can help her be successful, because her food truck can lead her into catering and other things, and she can.
So that will all be part of her plan?
Right, and it can all be focused right out of this building, you know what I mean? So that gives you guys the focal point of something positive. And this building is a standalone building, it's a go-to spot. People come to that location. I want her to capitalize on the fact that we haven't been gone very long, the people that are still trying to come to Jesse Jeans, if she can hurry and get open, then she can capitalize on those people that are coming that don't know that we're gone and be like, hey, come in and try my food, I'm working with the owners of Jesse Jeans, this is what I'm doing, come try my stuff.
Absolutely.
She has an opportunity right now that we really want to play off of, I think it could be instrumental in helping her success.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, okay? Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Please, your name and address?
I am Kenny Connors.
Kenny?
Some of you know me from a former business. I used to work in politics for many years with National Register Congressman, the only non-lobbyist that the United States recognizes. I am now a realtor, and I have done a lot of reala, real estate in this city. I'm actually Anna's realtor for across the street. One of the biggest things I get called down during legislative session about is small businesses, and I get called into those committees quite often. I met with Mr. Sant down in that meeting and stuff, and we had a good conversation, and he asked me to look into a couple of things, and I called a couple other cities across the country that I know are doing it, one that I'm very familiar with, out in Kentucky. And out in Kentucky, he said, you know, they do three hundred thousand is what they got going on and stuff. One of the things that I would be, mention is that I like Mr. Tafoya's concern with how they addressed it out there was, at least two or three of the loans they put aside for businesses that have been in, been doing business for quite a number of years, guarant, almost a guaranteed pass rate and everything else, to get them going. They put a couple of them off just for that, and then they put off some, a majority of them for new startup businesses. I would recommend that to the city is to look at that and say, okay, let's do two or three, put them off to the side for those who are coming in who have six, seven, eight, nine, ten years in, into it. As a real estate agent, I get asked about them all the time, where should I go, what should I do? What can I do as, you know, and I look at that. And then the startup businesses. As for Roy, I love Roy. Roy is, I see the, the unfounded flower here in the northern Utah portion, because nobody, everybody goes by Roy, and they don't think about it, and when they do stop in Roy, they fall in love with Roy. They start finding out, oh, you have, we have all this stuff here, but what we're lacking is small businesses. In my, as a commercial real estate, I would love to make it a goal for me to help find good companies like Myra's, to stick them in here and make Roy a blooming, blooming city and stuff. Still, but still keep that flower a little bit closed a little bit, so we can keep it Still, but still keep that flower a little bit closed, a little bit, so we can keep it within us here and stuff. I love Roy, but I'm going, I would tell you that thirty thousand is a big deal. The comment that was just made, opening it up to one to seven years, that's a big deal. The personal guarantee is something that me and Mr. Sant talked about, which I firmly believe in, that you need. The other thing I would also ask is that if you're doing this loan, these city, these businesses need to make a commitment back to the city for something like Roy Days.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
Something where they're giving back to the city, so you know what? Yes, you're giving, you're giving them a loan and everything else, but what about giving back to the city? What about giving back to the citizens of this place? Myra's all for that. She would love to take her truck out here for Roy City Days and be able to out here. She's going to do some business, she's going to make some money, but she's supporting Roy City. She's making it a step up. And I think that should be a qualification inside our package somewhere that we give back to Roy City. We give back to citizens of Roy.
Certainly, Anna has done that in her.
Anna's done that.
In her past.
You know, there's some businesses that do and then there's some businesses that come in here and they go. And you've never heard of them and you never see them or they come in and. You know, they're still in existence, but when you go to ask them to give back to the city, you know? Mr. Paulson over there has a hard time getting, pulling teeth sometimes, you know? Let's make it a requirement, let's say, hey, we're glad to give this to you. But we want to, we want to hear part of your plan is how do you plan on giving back to the city? Is it during Roy City Days? Something Mr. Paulson knows that he's got in his back pocket now that he can make it bigger and better?
Can that be included in the business plan, Mr. Sant? Is that legal, is that possible?
It certainly could. It could be one of the criteria that we look at as benefits, back to the city as a public benefit is.
Thank you.
We could add that to it.
Okay.
I'm here for a resource for you, as any time you need me, please reach out. Byron has my number and stuff, I'd be glad to share it with the rest of you if you needed it. Let me be a resource for you as you go through this process. Mr. Sant had, grabbed my number, let me be a resource, let me be a help.
Thank you.
I'm not asking for any money, I just want to be a help. I see a business like Myra and working with Anna, right on track. Business plan and everything else, but I would rather be the resource and be a help and not have to put all the burden on the city staff at times. Sometimes it needs help and I would like to be that help and stuff. But know that from the real estate, real estate's going up, the prices are going up. For a small business, this makes a big deal to get started.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Okay, board members? Don't believe we have anything else?
Do you have any questions for Randy?
I just wanted.
Please, Randy.
The only thing I did want to outline, I did forget, Mr. Tafoya did mention it to me. On the last page, I kind of outlined some of the things we'll be looking at in the application. And then also, I wanted to share with you what the loan evaluation would include that we would go through when we're evaluating the loan. So we're trying to make the best recommendation that we can based upon the information that's given. If a loan's incomplete, we'll tell them to go back and provide us the information. So I just wanted to share that with you, that that'll be part of the process. Again, we'll have this ready to go for your adoption at your second meeting in September. And we'll be ready to owe money.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, board members? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, appreciate your time, thanks for joining.